We have no cases on the agenda today. And we have a number of communications. The first is modification of B3 zones. Steve, would you like to explain about that to us?
I believe there previously been a discussion about restaurants, eating and drinking places, excuse me, the term eating and drinking places in the code. And without a definition of either one, I mean, most people know what eating is, but what is drinking? Is it drinking Pepsi, chocolate milk, alcohol, or liquor license involved? So what I provided to you was, starting in B1 zones, any kind of reference to eating, drinking places, restaurants, bars, that kind of thing. So you've got examples of what the code used to say prior to the, I believe, 2004 revisions. And then you've got copies of what I've put on there as new code or current code. And then you should have also, well, let me, one other thing on that. When I, when actually, when I did a search, I did come up with the words bar and eating establishment, believe it or not, in general regulations, which I think are some pretty good existing guidelines, but they're in a whole different section of the code.
Okay, that's the last page you talked about, Title IX.
Yeah. And especially because, you know, the word, I don't know that the word bar even shows up in the zoning code, but it does here in the general regs. It used to show up in the old zoning code. And then the other thing that I just provided, and I think the mayor may have gotten your copies of it too, is the bold strikeout version from when the code was actually changed. So what you're seeing there is the actual ordinance. So I think what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish here is, I mean, we want to make sure that you can have coffee and donuts on Stimson Avenue, for example, right? That's what we're, we're trying to get to. And there's just always been, I don't necessarily call it, probably a pretty good assumption, that drink, eating and drinking, drinking meant alcohol. Now, to give you a little background too, hopefully this will help. Several years ago, I was subject of a taxpayers lawsuit related to a, what was it, business on a particular street in town? Eating and drinking is what was going on there. It was in a B1 zone. And the eventual outcome of that court case was that eating and drinking, because at the time, and it was under the old code, it talked about ice cream parlors and things like that. The argument was made from the one side that drinking meant soda and Pepsi and milk, non-alcohol, even though there wasn't, you know, a distinction or a definition. So because of that court case, that kind of drew the line. B1, it doesn't mean alcohol. B2, B2D, B3, it does. However, it makes it a little hard when you have things like neighborhood bars, like Archie Bunker's place, right? Is that something you want to have in a B1 zone? And for example, B1 strip is Smiling Skull, Grinders, the Indian Restaurant, you know, a couple of places down through there. There's going to be a new coffee shop down there. So you want to have alcohol there? Cat's Den? You want to have alcohol in that kind of a neighborhood, or you don't, in a B1? So that's why I copied the B1 section also. And a little bit of background too on some case law, local case law. I mean, obviously, what we want to get to is, if we can get, you know, coff, if we can get Tim Hortons on, you know, want to make sure it's close to a neighborhood, not far away from it.
So really, what we're looking at, looking at the old strike through, it was obviously on page, which was 38, I believe, of the old?
Yeah.
It was number three there. It looks like the intention was to have eating and drinking establishments within a certain distance, but they be allowed. And, am I reading that correctly?
Well, I think what it's saying is, what we have under B2 is that eating and drinking places are allowed, and nightclubs, entertainment is allowed, but not within 100 feet of any R district. Okay, so eating and drinking, you kind of have, there's no, and this is for the downtown, the B2 downtown. So you don't have, like, eating and drinking, you don't have a distance requirement, but then entertainment, you have 100-foot distance requirement. And then it's, looks like what happened here, that they're taking out certain exceptions, drive-ins and summer gardens and roadhouses, to have, not, not be just in any place, but they had it to be 200 feet, just certain types of restaurants. That's, that's my reading of it. Because the idea with this is, when you look at, you know, any use permitted and is regulated in the B2 and B2D zones, is what would be allowed in the B3 zones.
Uh huh.
Okay.
But then they made the further stipulation in the B3, saying the eating and drinking, they were specifically talking about drive-in theaters and drinking places, summer gardens, roadhouses.
Right.
So they were making specific about the limitation of that. Those would be now allowed in, provided they were such a distance away.
Right, right.
Okay.
So they're separating out theoretically, in a B2, those would all be allowed wherever. And then entertainment has a distance establishment, and then drive-ins and, or drive-throughs, drive-ins, difference. Summer gardens and roadhouses would have a further establish, distance of 200 feet, so it has a higher distance hurdle to meet.
Okay, so the difference in the B1 did not change between the old code and the new code. The distance between the B2, D, required, actually didn't change it at all either, if I'm reading correctly. No, wait a second. You don't have B2D here, do we? The old version, oh. Nice new code. But really, what we're trying to look at is B3, and the difference there, okay, so I see that you made some recommendations for changing on this?
Well, and then there's, right.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm looking back and putting it to, you know, my, my reading of it was that originally intended, the code did not preclude all restaurants in the B3 general business zone.
It was intended to restrict the drive-ins and drinking.
It's, yeah, and drinking places, summer gardens and roadhouses.
Okay.
Now, whether there's definition of what a summer garden is and a roadhouse, we can define those at one point. I know what roadhouses are generally, in other parts of the country. But, so I would put either reinstate the original language, which I have down here.
In bold there.
In bold. Or, you know, this is also given the fact that now there's the new, some of the new wording that occurred with, with the adult entertainment complexes also. I don't know if this was trying to, to cover some of those with a roadhouse. So that would be a suggestion, and then it would go with the, the new thing that the council members sent over, the resolution.
That's the R, that's the R3.
That's in the same section, and it's just talking about outside operations, and we can put that within it too, because it's another 200 feet. However, this will have to, to, I think we probably should make a new section on outside operations, because it's still talking about eating and drinking establishments, and not just drive-ins and such. Because if we do this new thing, we put the new wording in, that means drive-in, eating and drinking places, summer gardens, roadhouses will be 200 feet from R1 or R2.
Okay, so you're actually saying, as it stands now, that would be Section 230407A3. You'd want a Section 4, is that what you're saying? Where it would cover the business conducting outside operations with the 200 feet?
Yes, I would, because right now, with the idea that you have drinking establishments here, and then you have under 230406 subsection A5, entertainment, nightclubs, theaters, billiard, blah, 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 has to be 100 feet. Now, is this eating and drinking establishment put forward by the city council for this, for the outside operations, also including entertainment?
Well, it doesn't seem so.
What I would suggest is fixing the eating and drinking establishments by allowing restaurants, except for these, within 100 feet, because that's what the original B2 downtown is. Keeping the entertainment night 100 feet. And then when we do the outside operations, not only have eating and drinking establishments put in, also entertainment establishments. So you have eating and drinking establishments, and then entertainment establishments are the nightclubs and all the other things that may or may not serve food.
So you would change city council's language to say eating and drinking and entertainment establishments?
Right, and that will be much more inclusive, because I can see somebody right now coming up and saying, well, we're not an eating and drinking establishment, we're a dance hall.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Or we just have a, happen to have a disc jockey outside.
Right, right. So that, that, and then that could go back, it would be a different subsection, I would, I, I think it needs to be an A4 subsection.
Okay, since I don't have the entire code with me, I know there's sections in the code that require outside operations of some sort, not allowed, except for?
By license.
Oh, yeah. So are we muddling that by putting another section in that has, that's specific for eating and drinking?
Well, when it, couldn't we say something, and businesses conducting licensed outside operations?
Do we have a license for, for that?
I mean, that's, that's a question of?
Do they have to get a license for outside operations, as, as separate from inside operations?
There is a tables, benches, benches and chairs permit that you can get, that's like a license. It's approved by city council, and so on a public sidewalk, you can have eating and drinking, not drinking alcohol. But, and that's all the tables, benches and chairs you see up and down.
But you don't need a license if it's like out in front of Brony's, which is on the property of the restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what, see, that's where this would come in, because it's outside operations, period. Whether it's the licensed ones where you can drink coffee, or the unlicensed one where it's on their property.
Right.
Okay, I, I guess I was looking at, I'm trying to look at the old code right now, which would probably be, I think I'm looking at B2, looks like, no, it's a B3. Talks about contracted yards, related establishments, building materials, not included, concrete mixing, et cetera, et cetera. There's a subsection A there. I'm trying, let's see if it's on that old, the section that Steve printed for us. I don't know if it is or not. See if we can, if anything. Okay, wholly, okay, contractors, okay, that'd be 10, this is on page 2316 of the new code that Steve gave us. Note, note subsection 10A, must wholly be, wholly within the completely enclosed building except for storage of vehicles, building zone at least 100 feet from any R zone, unless the building has no openings other than stationary windows required for fire exits, when conducted in area completely enclosed. The impression I got on that one is that any operations, this is a section that says things have to be done inside a building.
For contractors.
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, yeah, this is another section that says inside the building, outside operations. So we're, we're looking at another section we're going to add into here. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with what you're talking about, but, you know, I'm just reminding how it'll mesh with these other sections that we may not even know of another piece in there.
Right, but if this, if councils' outside operations has, is specifically talking about eating, drinking and entertainment establishments, then it shouldn't impact things that are under contractors or trailer?
True.
You know, or building cabins, those sort of things.
Okay.
So you've kind of limited, and that's why it probably should go as a subsection under, I don't know how you would do that, A3, I don't know if you would do A4, and then you'd mess up all the writing for the rest of it.
No, I think?
Or A3.1.
Well?
No.
I don't know how.
No, you'd do A, you'd do A3, small A.
Okay, so you can keep it together, but it would be its own, its own little statement.
Yeah, yeah, because it's got to stay in, in paragraph three, I think.
Right, but that's what I would suggest doing, and I would suggest putting in the entertainment clause also.
Okay.
If I could, as, like an example from the past, hopefully this might clarify it some, there's that section in the code that says, "All business must be conducted within a completely enclosed building." All right, then what happened, what, then people, well, there was the thought then that that mean, well, you, that means you can't have outdoor eating and drinking. Everything has to be conducted in the building. What ended up happening was, the conducting business took place in the building. You walked up to a window or ordered, you ordered in the building, and then you carried out. And so that was kind of drawn as a, the difference. So it wasn't, it was where the business was being conducted, not where things were being consumed. So, I mean, just think about that as that, because you could get back in that same kind of possible pitfall, where things could, if you don't want them to occur outside without a license, or if you want a special, for example, if you want to conduct business outside for eating and drinking, make it a conditional use, go to the zoning board and have them review it. Be another example of a way to, way to handle it. But just so you know, that's what happened in the past. You know, it says all in a building, well, that's because the business was being conducted in the building, eating, drinking was going on outside. For example, if I go down to McDonald's and get a, you know, a Happy Meal, can I sit on a bench outside? See what I'm saying?
And here, this has operations as opposed to business, business conducting outside operations, and whether that would be enough of a difference between just conducting business versus that we'd be able to, I mean?
Yeah, so what's conducting business, business operation, that kind of, I think it's going to be pretty critical, what?
Right.
Because that's going to be the breakup.
We want to have outside, I think it's nice to have people be able to eat outside, but, you know, unfortunately, because of certain problems, now we have to have a regulation that says that they have to stop at midnight.
Right.
So how do you word that, so that it, they understand that it really does mean them, sort of?
I don't remember the exact language, but I believe in the downtown, section on the downtown district in the comprehensive plan, it does talk about outdoor eating and drinking, and I think it encourages it, but that's why, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have the details in my mind, but there are some parameters, you know, that are, that are set. It might mean more of a French café kind of thing, rather than a roadhouse.
Regarding this resolution from council, R0308, that was being discussed here regarding ceasing outside operations and within 200 feet of a residential zone, exactly how many businesses will this affect? I mean, have you been able to?
Within, businesses within 200 feet of any, it's any residential zone, right?
R1 or R2.
R1 or R2, it says.
Oh.
Of a residential zone.
Well, it begins with?
Yeah, but it says, the principal building.
And, the next one, 200 feet over R zones, anything.
Of a residential zone.
Of a residential, that's another reason it needs to be separated out, because they're also saying R3, I think, in that, we may want to be.
See, that was one of the differences, if you just look at the uptown area, there's an R1 to the north, fairly close, but it's up on the hill a little bit. But as you come down the street, there's R3 on both sides of Court Street. So when you include the R3, and you go out 200 feet, then you do start affecting quite a few, you know, quite a few places I know in the uptown area. And then I guess, all I'm trying to, I don't know exactly what the answer, I'm just trying to visualize, I'm going down Richland Avenue, you know, I've got R1, obviously right, right next to me, but it's B2 and B3 all the way down through there. Of course, everybody knows about Stimson Avenue, that's, and, see, Stimson would be a good example too, of when you include an R3, that's everything south of Stimson. So then all of a sudden, you start taking in, you know, businesses that could, could be operating on the south side of the street. They're far enough away from the, you know, the R1, let's say, above Stimson, but they're right next to the R3 then, because all of that, it used to be manufacturing all down through there, and that, there's no manufacturing zone left. The old landmark was the last manufacturing zone, until you get clear out to Athens Mold Machine. So that R3 is pushed all the way up to Stimson. So, you know, there's the possibility, and then there's the question of how, how does this affect businesses that are operating currently? How would they be affected? And there was discussion too about, especially if you set time parameters, would that be something just had to do with operations, where it's something you could change easily, and you couldn't just, you know, claim, claim you were grandfathered?
Yeah, if you change something like that in the zoning code, then what, how do you grandfather? If you change the time?
I think, I think, my understanding of grandfathering is when it's, when you have such, the change would be so onerous, such as it would make you give up part of your business, like lose your liquor license, change from, you know, those sort of things to where it's a definite impact on your rights of, of use and the rights of the landowner. But business hours and those sort of things doesn't, it's not saying you don't get to operate your business anymore, it's just saying, you know, you have to be open and closed at certain times. So that shouldn't, there shouldn't be a, a big question about grandfathering, because I don't, you know, you have to look at how onerous this regulation is on land, you know, land, on business establishments. And it's, you know, if we said, outside shall cease, outside operations at 2:00 in the afternoon, that's a lot different than 12:00 AM. You know, this is not putting a huge burden upon a business owner. We're also not saying that they have to stop business inside the establishment. So I would, I would argue that there would be very little case for grandfathering.
Well, it seems to me that 10:00 PM on weekdays is pretty restrictive.
But that's no different than the noise ordinance.
Yeah, it's being in line with the noise ordinance, so.
And, and I would have a different view of grandfather status. I always look at it as more a physical definition of what has to be changed. I mean, you could say, you know, doing something like this would impact businesses, because they'd have to shut down their operation.
Only their outside operation.
Outside operation, yes. And, and again, that's why I'm a little fuzzy on, I'm hearing this thing saying, okay, businesses, conducting business outside versus business operation, it sounds like we might have to define that eventually, because, you know, to say, okay, we buy the beer or the sandwich inside, and then go outside, you know, Wendy's, McDonald's, or something to eat it, you know, are we conducting, is the business operation inside? Are we conducting business outside, which is what this definition talks about?
Right.
Businesses conducting outside operations. I mean, it's a kind of a hodgepodge of two different definitions here, you know, conducting business and business operations. So I'm a little leery of that.
I have a question about enforcement. Is this something that's going to be laid on to our police department to have to cruise, of course, they're up here, but I just wonder how that's going to have to be enforced? You're talking about, from your coffee, I mean, this means the coffee shop people, it doesn't necessarily mean the bars, it really isn't impacting.
Yeah, that was what I was calling to ask you about yesterday.
I do have a little bit of that, and that, I don't know if Scott Thompson or Ron Forrest is here. Captain Pila is on leave, and the chief is in teaching and training for NIMs, and so I sent out the email, but this, we had a discussion at staff meeting about decibel meters, the mayor had asked about decibel meters. And what they came back was, for one thing, if you had one, it would cost us quite a bit, because you have to get it calibrated every time, it's not like their radar speed system, so, so that's, that's a cost. But then Ron Forrest, I have noted here, discussed not only that, but the sound pressure levels and the difference. They've gone, they respond to noise complaints, and they'll show up there, and they'll stand there at Brony's, or, or an establishment, and it's not, it's not excessive. But if you're up in a hill, because of this whole valley sound, you know, it's just, there's geographical barriers that impact this.
This is no different than the rotunda effect on most buildings. I mean, if you're in a rotunda, you can hear the whisper all the way across, but you can't hear it in the middle. And then this has to do with acoustics and how our hills, in terms of enforcement, it would have to come down to complaint base, I imagine.
I was wondering too, how you measure the 200 feet in a case like Carpenter Street to Fort Street? Do you measure it going up the ground, going up the ground, or do you measure just as a bird flies?
The, the last revision to zoning code, that had to be clarified because of, remember we talked about deed restricted parking within 250 feet? Question became, how, how do you measure 250? What if my parking spot's way on the far side of a big lot, and my bedroom is way on the other side? How do you measure it? The definition just says from property line to property line. So that would be a straight line, not up a hill, just a two-dimensional, like a tax plat. That's, that's the definition now of how that's measured. As far as enforcement, not related to noise, that'd be something that, you know, myself or a code officer would have to come in after hours to take care of, probably be me that would do that. And again, you just write a, the process that we would use would be same as we use in the housing code, send a notice of violation if they don't cease and desist, order to comply, and then take the information to the law director's office and ask them to write up a complaint to be filed in court against the owner. So it's not one of those things where you can, you know, pull, pull the plug on the, on the jukebox kind of thing, it's a process you have to go through.
We do, when we change, or recommend a change to the zoning code, we need a public hearing, right?
That's correct.
Or, or council can have the public hearing.
Well, I think it ought to happen.
There needs to be one, one public hearing, or?
I think it ought to happen here first, and then council should have another one, because it's affecting the businesses. And I think we might get, if we had people from businesses with outdoor, what do we call it, outdoor, outside operations, we might get some help in what would be a, a useful definition that would be workable. And so I, I suggest that we make note of the changes that, that we've all suggested, particularly Chris's, Chris's comments, and that we do something about this within 200 feet of a residential zone, and specify what kind of a residential zone, and that we then put it together as a prospective change and have a public hearing.
For both sections, also the eating and drinking establishment, the first part?
Yeah, let's, let's do both, because it really is all, all part of the same, part of the code.
Okay. So the recommendation here is to, to modify the eating and drinking establishments in terms of distance of drive-ins, eateries and drinkeries, summer gardens and roadhouses, and the other section would be to put in a subsection, small A, business conducting outside operations within 200 feet of residential zone, so cease operations at 12:00 AM on Friday, Saturday, and 10:00, I think, Mondays and Thursdays.
We want to say within 200 feet of an R1 or R2 residential zone.
Well, I would question, because I think that people in R3 have just as much right to having quiet than, I understand that if there's more R3 closer I understand that if there's more R3 closer to the areas, but, I mean, I know people who live in some of these areas and, and they. My concern is that sometimes we treat the R3s as lesser, you know, sort of citizens. So.
So you might keep it in.
I, I.
I'll keep it like that. Okay.
Okay.
Then, do you want to change the principal building shall be at least 200 feet from any R1 or R2 zone? Do you want to put any R zones, any residential zones?
Oh, for the eating and drinking establishments?
Right.
Well, I think that, that this is, the idea behind this is, is that it's separating. I mean, that's another discussion is, is that how it's written now, you can't have any restaurant within 200 feet of an R1 or R2 zone district.
Okay, really what you're talking about is substituting this first one, you were talking about the drive-in eating some places for that second sentence. The one you're, the one in bold for the first page, those are both, those are both the same section of code.
Right.
So, so really what we're doing is substituting that eating, drinking establishment and, you know, that's already been covered in B2Ds. We're just, we're just clarifying that the drive-ins, drink places have to be a certain distance.
Right.
But the other ones, that, that section that we're looking at in R3 would be struck out. Eating and drinks, the principal building should be at least 200 feet from R1 or R2 zones.
Right.
That's going to be removed by our.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the thing is, is if this, if what the council wants is becomes a little A, a subsection A, then you would strike out all of this. And then it would just be business, any businesses conducting outside operations, meaning restaurants, eating, drinking and entertainment establishments, conducting outside operations and within 200 feet of residential zones, shall cease operations, you know, shall, shall cease outside operations. So what they did is that they just took the part that we want to change and put it as, you know, so that's why it needs. I would strike it out and then as a new section, write in what you mean. So.
Okay, what you're saying is this, the, the page that was passed out for once is recommended to change the zoning code. That section is basically in the bold is 230407A3.
Right.
So that replaces the eating, drinking establishments dash, drive-ins and eating, drinking places, summer gardens, roadhouses provided, provided. The principal building should be at least 200 feet from an R1 or R2 district. Then you'll have a small A saying, include entertainment, I see, yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
Including entertainment, sorry, okay. Okay. So, and then you'd, then you'd come to the small A, which is the sound or outside operations part. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, from what I understand, okay, is that this wording right here that was changed originally, it was that it. What happened was when it was changed to eating and drinking establishment must be 200 feet from R1 or R2, it changed.
I agree.
Right.
I know what you're saying.
Right. So, so what, what I'm saying is that entertainment, the entertainment part has already been discussed earlier in the B2 section. Now, unless we want to make entertainment as, you know, I don't think you need to include eating and drinking and entertainment establishments, these types of entertainment, or we, we can, I mean, a roadhouse, I'd say is an entertainment establishment.
Okay.
So, and then when we write, rewrite this part of the noise of the outside operations, that we put this, put, you know, eating, drinking and entertainment establishments, businesses conducting outside. So.
Okay. I, I look at the eating and drinking establishment as a title that they're covering. In other words, they're clarifying that the, these eating and drinking, eating, drink establishments. And then they're clarifying, since it's allowed already in the B2Ds and the B2s, that they're clarifying where the location of drinking, drive-in and drinking places. And that's where you'll add your entertainment.
Right.
Is that what you're telling me?
Right.
Okay.
And then when, when you get to this thing, whatever the, you have to put something in this because we can't have just businesses conducting.
Type of businesses?
Type of, the type of businesses.
If it's under the subset eating and drinking establishments, so.
I'm better safe than sorry.
I've got a request that the two of you get together and.
Rewrite it.
Do a proposed wording and email the two of us all. Because it'll be a lot easier to see it.
Okay.
In the whole, without having, without switching back to the old and the new. It's good that we've got the old and the new here to compare it with, but that'll save us some time.
And we'll have to set up a public hearing.
And we might just as well now set up a public hearing. Because we'll have time for that. Is it a 30-day or a 10-day public hearing?
No, I'm not real sure. I know you, there has to be two public hearings, one at this level, one at the council level. And, and the code specifically spells out the pre-notification time and a publication of general circulation. Or if it affects less than 10 properties, letters individually. It's all lined out in the code, the timeframes.
Okay, so we'll need a public hearing set.
Yeah, part of the trouble is you have to get three or four days ahead of time, information to the messenger in order to get it published. So there's, you know, for example, a 10-day notice takes about four, two weeks ahead to get it to the, to the newspaper.
Okay.
And I want to say though, it's 30 days. There's a, a 30-day window where it's, people are mauling it over before the hearing. But I'll check, I can let you, I can let you know exactly the time.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
And if we try to get it done in July, because August, it may disappear.
Well, if we can get, yeah, we should be able to get it done in, in July because that's, this is only two-thirds of the way through June. So. Okay. Anything more on, on this topic? Lot split on the plains. Would you like to explain it to us?
This is one, I got this application the end of last week and I really wasn't sure what to do with it. And I just thought I'd ask for some advice from the planning commission first. You have a vicinity map that shows the plains and most of those lots that you see there are platted about 100, 120 feet deep, 50 feet wide. So by current city and city standards, which include within the three mile subdivision regs applying to the three mile area too. These are all pre-existing non-conforming lots. You don't need building permits up there. So there's a lot of different things going on in the plains. Here comes an applicant who has three lots. Total area of 18,000 square feet. There's water and sewer in the plains, but no curb in this particular area. That forces the lot size up to 20,000 square feet as the minimum. The person wants to take three lots, turn them into two and needs, if you look at it technically, it needs frontage variances and area variance, both.
Frontage has to be 75s. What's the frontage have to be?
Right, on the, the back page, you've got your, your kind of bulk.
Sorry.
Bulk controls. You have to go second line down, curb and gutter, no. You have to have at least 90 feet of road frontage and 20,000 square feet of area. So one way to look at it is if you just left this completely alone, you could have three houses, actually you could have six houses constructed. Or, you know, there's a voluntary reduction in non-conformity, but it's still not a reduction enough to come into compliance. So is this something that requires a variance to do? Or is it something that because it's voluntarily reducing the possibility of non-conformity, it's something that could be done without a variance? And, you know, I guess that's my question, how, how you'd like to handle it. It has happened in the past. So you remember just recently the case where there was the apartment, it was up in the plains, apartment in the backyard, house in the front. Two lots, they just wanted to turn the line. That one I recommended refusal on based on frontage and lot size. You know, because they weren't, it was just a change. It wasn't, there was nothing being reduced. So this one's kind of the same, a little bit different. And just need some guidance from you, then I can, the applicant, I can let him know that, you know, it will be approved as is because it's voluntary reduction, although it doesn't conform, or that he needs, he needs to come request a variance.
Questions? Comments?
Does it have public water and sewer variance?
Right.
So the two requirements are the width lot and the total area.
Right.
It does have public sewer? Okay, yeah. And no curb. That's the difference. Okay.
And now just a couple of streets over, I talked to someone this morning, is considering buying land on Conant Road in the plains, just a couple of streets over. Conant Road does have curb and gutter. So if you look at the chart with curb and gutter, you reduce your area needed down to 9,450 square feet and your frontage down to 70. And these two proposed lots then would be really close to being conforming. It's that lack of stormwater control is what drove the, the difference in the bulk controls. Because you get so much, if you don't do it that way, you get really intense development, especially in the three mile without stormwater control. And then you got neighbors pushing water onto neighbors, you know, they don't like that ditch in front of their house. They want to fill it up. So that's why there's that difference.
Could, could there be something where, because it's smaller without curbs, that we require something along the line of stormwater management?
I think all the stormwater control in that particular area, the plains are just open ditch. There's some catch spaces around, but it's mostly ditch drainage. So there's, you know, not a whole lot, right there, not a whole lot of piping in place that I know of. And then, for example, too, you might just be putting in curb and gutter in a very restricted, you know, small area that wouldn't. It would protect that particular area, but, you know, none of the adjacent properties.
Okay.
And there's nothing built here currently?
Yeah, there's a house right now. The, the idea is there's a, well, I drove out there the other day. There's a, actually, believe it or not, there's a, kind of looks like a travel trailer, mobile home thing, sitting there that someone's living in. And then there's an actual house, stick-built house.
On both these, on two of these lots?
Well, it's actually on all three.
Okay.
One of these again.
Yeah. Yeah, you got essentially two existing structures of some kind. One of them's not a permanent structure and the other one is. I think the whole idea is to get the house on one lot and then this trailer lot separate. Yeah, there, there are two things there now.
Okay.
Well, that's better than having another structure appear because there are three lots.
I think that's what you're saying, speaking three unconforming lots and changing it to two.
Yeah.
And whether we want to make the landowner come in and make his case before us and we give him variances? Or we just say, go for it?
Do I have a motion?
There is a section, just so you know, that talks in the code that you don't even have to request, you don't have to have an approval from the planning commission. If you want to take all your lots and combine them, you can actually do that by a new perimeter description or language that calls all your parcels continuous and contiguous. That, to combine them all, that's permitted.
So he can make one lot out of it?
Right. The problem is though then.
He can't sell it separately.
Turn it back into two.
Okay, so really the, the question you're asking, is this a voluntary reduction in non-conforming and that no variance is needed? Is that what you're saying? We could do that?
Well, it would be, essentially it would be a policy, I guess. Because the language doesn't exactly, you know, doesn't spell it out. You've got something that's bad, you're making it better, but it's not perfect.
On the other hand, you know, there's probably some times where you'd want to combine all these three lots. I mean, there's probably conditions where you'd say, okay, this is a problem because of water runoff. Just being that the restricting piece right now here.
I know some of the discussion in the past too is that when you have land that goes under multiple control, then you have multiple people you have to deal with if there's a problem. If it's all in control of one person, then you're only dealing with one person when there's a problem.
Well, but that's not guaranteed in the future with this if they sell the second lot.
Right. There could be three. It's going to be reduced to two. But it's not, it's not down to two conforming.
Anybody want to make a motion about this?
From what I see, there's two ways of doing it. One is to say, you know, no variance needed, or the other one is propose a variance. Rather than create a policy, I'd say let's propose a variance to allow this to happen.
I agree.
So I move that we, we grant a variance to combine three lots into two, having a sub-size, substandard width and, yeah, non-conforming width and area.
I will second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Okay.
I'll let the applicant, we just had a hearing.
There's the objects, we can always revisit it, but I have.
We can have a few weeks' wait, counsel, but it will happen.
Okay.
I would like to refresh our memories about what happened with the Athens Station request about building, buildings behind the station. And my recollection is that we told Mr. Tremblay it ought to be a PUD, but that we haven't gotten a, a request with plans, right?
I have. When the, the original application came in to convert Tuscantos to four apartments and build a second building that had six or eight units in it, the question was, could that be part of the existing station project PUD or did it need to be something that was separate? And I think it was decided because it's on a separate parcel of land, not the, the lease area that the city has for the station project, that it would be its own separate planned unit development. No additional information has been provided in order to, to proceed with that. In the meantime though, I believe that you had a request to rezone the area in front of the station that kind of had a relationship to it. So we've made it up to that point. I don't know if that would affect their application or not.
Well, what we.
Probably not.
What we told city council was that we discovered that the station project has a 40-year lease on that parcel in front of the station, which permits parking and landscaping. And the 40-year lease also has a renewal, a 20-year renewal and then a possible third renewal after that expires. So there's not much point in considering rezoning. And so that's basically what we told city council.
So that.
So that's, that's where the rest of that request stands. That's what I want to know.
I'm trying to remember too, because there was, I believe you sent the city council a recommendation that the strip where the new construction was proposed to go to R3.
And.
And, you know, city council's going to wait until they get a request to use a site plan.
They want to see a plan before they rezone.
So the next step is then for Mr. Tremblay or Ms. Schaefer, their representative, to submit a new site drawing?
Right.
PUD.
I, if you'd like, I can get ahold of Ms. Schaefer and just say, you know, if you, if you're ready to proceed now, you know, to the. I guess you could say we've had several pre-application meetings. We have that.
Right.
Out of the way and we, if they want to, they can just submit the information. We'll go to possible preliminary approval consideration.
Fine.
Yeah, I can get ahold of her.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Any other communications?
No.
Opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Announcements and other business. Our next meeting will be July 3rd at noon. And we'll check on the date for a public hearing on the zoning code revision. The minutes, I haven't had a chance to read yet.
I'm just looking through them and we said that we'd add a city planner. I was looking through them, and we said that we'd add a city planners report.
Oh, okay.
Which hasn't gotten done yet, so I guess you have a reprieve for two more weeks.
One sec.
I didn't know if there's anything that you wanted to report, Paul, at this, at this stage.
He is, he is the planner. That'd be a good start. But he's looking for housing.
Still.
I don't have anything to add right now. I don't have time for that.
I've been giving him lots of little assignments along the way, even though he's part-time, I've had him running around doing various things.
There's one other thing that we need to be thinking about, and I'll talk to Pat Lang about. In the information for planning commissions that you've given us, there is a section about site visits and the problems that site visits cause if we go in a body without advertising it beforehand. And given the timeline of putting cases on the agenda, we don't really have a way to advertise a site visit ahead of time because we don't know what we'll be doing, looking at. So, we need to be thinking, and we don't have to decide anything now, but we need to be thinking about some systematic way in which we can do site visits and make sure that we see the areas before we have to discuss it. And I, I will talk to the law director and see if there's a way that we could schedule an official site visit so that we can all be there. And we won't make any decisions, but it would be nice if we all knew what the topographical appearance was. And, so.
Have you had any bikes on your sign committee?
Larry Payne wrote it up.
Oh, yeah.
I transmitted it to the neighborhood association, but I don't think it got.
It went out?
It went out.
To the executive meeting people, and we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
So, that'll be the next side of it.
Yeah, Larry said that you had, that he gave you some names.
And I think, once they get started, maybe we could tell them they don't have to wait until they have completed the review of all of those categories. We'd be happy to take them one by one.
Yeah.
Especially the electronic signs, if we can get there first.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes?
All motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, yeah.